Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is John Gary Herrera, Senior Vice President of Public Engagement for VIA Metropolitan Transit. Thanks. Thank you for joining our live interactive telephone town hall. Tonight, our panel will be discussing what comes next for Keep SA Moving, Keeps Antonio Moving, a comprehensive plan to transform our region through transit and provide mobility options. As our region continues its rapid expansion and growth, the future transit has never been more important. Today, at this event, we'd like to give not only ourselves a chance to speak to you directly, but we'd like to hear from you as well. Our phone participants, we'd like to invite you to watch the livestream by visiting keepsantoniamoving.com. Click on the Events tab at the top of the page, and you'll find the streaming player there. To ask questions live, please stay on the phone. For attendees participating on the web, you can submit your questions in the chat box in the streaming player. I'm very excited tonight to host this conversation with you and our outstanding panel. So let me introduce our panel and our guests tonight. We have Jeffrey Arnt, Jeff Arnt, and that is two Fs, President and CEO of VIA Metropolitan Transit, Jeff, and Kami Horn, our Senior Vice President and Development at VIA. Kami, great to see you all. So thank you all for joining us tonight. So as I mentioned, this is an informative forum, and we'd love to hear from you. We'd like to make this as interactive as possible. We'd like to take as many questions from participants as possible as we go through this live event. To that end, if you have a question, you're on the telephone, you can press star three on your phone keypad at any time, and you will be placed in line to speak with a member of our staff. After that, the next time you hear your name, you will be live on the call, and you'll be able to ask your question directly to us. If you're streaming the event on our website, you can simply type in your name and question below the streaming player, and we'll get to those internet questions as they come in as well. So with that, well, let's go ahead and get started. We're really excited to come off a great event from last week. The San Antonio Mobility Coalition last week hosted a forum and luncheon where VIA was able to participate and address and deliver what we call our state of transit. What is the state of transit? During the presentation, during our presentation that was directed to the audience by Jeff, Jeff, you talked about the road that VIA and the community we serve has traveled, so to speak, since 2019. I was wondering if you could go ahead and walk us through where we've been and what were some of the messages that you delivered to that audience?
Certainly. So first of all, I'd like to welcome everybody. It's hard to believe 2019 was only two years ago because in many respects, doesn't it seem like far more like a lifetime ago, pre-COVID? But pre-COVID in 2019, we were seeing the fruits of our labor, both the labor that VIA had put in in implementing new Primo routes and the labor that the city of San Antonio put in by providing $10 million funding annually to support increased frequency and service. And so in the beginning of 20, we were seeing the first month after month after month after month ridership increases and at a level of about 6%. So it was a pretty exciting time. We were putting together a ballot initiative to pursue a 1/8 cent sales tax increase for the Advanced Transportation District. And then bam, March hit, COVID hit, our ridership declined about 45%. Compared to the nation, that wasn't bad. There were many that were seeing 75 and 80% reductions. But we had a 45% reduction. The remaining 55% were, of course, most likely essential workers that needed to get to the grocery stores or wherever the clinics, the doctors' offices. So the whole community kind of reset at that time, or I guess the word, the COVID word we all like is pivot. We all pivoted. And so our ballot initiative pivoted. And while we were continuing to pursue that 1/8 cent, we would not start receiving that 1/8 cent until 2026. And during the intervening time, the city of San Antonio would receive that funding to fund a jobs program, a workforce development program. So I tell people that on that night in November, it was a two-edged sword. It was so gratifying, and thank you to all of you, so gratifying to see that we had a 68% positive response in the vote, about 2 to 1. And what was increasingly and especially positive was the fact that that, that, I guess, victory, I'll say victory, was geographically universal. If you see a map of the distribution of votes across the entire area, there were only two or three small areas in the far outskirts that did not support the referendum. So we thank everybody for that global support. So on the one hand, I'm very excited because the new ATD sales tax would bring additional funding that would allow us to move our program forward. On the other hand, 2026 would be the first year we would receive it. And therefore, our funding was going to be flat from 2020 to 2026, which meant in my eyes that we would tread water for five years, and then we could start swimming and keep San Antonio moving. But one of the silver linings, if there are silver linings to COVID, was the fact that we received three, if you will, three tranches of funding through the federal government to help us through COVID. And so part of that money would pay for the loss of fare revenue, the loss of sales tax, the increased cost of keeping the fleet especially clean, if you will, paying for keeping our operators on the payroll even if we weren't running 100% service. So part of it was for that. But it will also enable us to advance the Keep SA Moving Plan because we will be able to apply some of that money to begin the programs that we thought we could only start in 2026. So that's really exciting because now we don't have to tread water, we can start swimming. And that's the deal we like. I would tell you that the plan itself has three legs. It's a better bus, it is ART, and it is MOD. And so I'll let Kami kind of describe those for everyone in a moment. But those are the three cornerstone of the plan. And what we're trying to do is help address the fact that this area of the state and the state as a whole are growing tremendously. So Bear County just crossed the 2 million population and is expected to grow, I think, to another, an additional 3.4 million. That's on top of the 2 million. It's not to 3.4, it's to 5.7. That's a lot of people, a lot of transportation needs. And so we are going to be an important piece, along with all the other modes, an important piece of keeping SA moving.
You know, Jeff, I'm going to take a moment here to remind folks that are on the call using their phones that you can press star three on your phone keypad at any time, and you'll be placed in line to speak with a member on this panel here today. So again, that's star three. So Kami, if we could go over to you. Jeff mentions the three legs of this core principles that we have in the Keeps San Antonio Moving Plan. It's frequency improving bus service, mobility on demand service, and ART, Advanced Rapid Transit. Advanced Rapid Transit is one of the bigger capital intensive moments. And we'd like for you to talk a little bit more about that for those that are listening and viewing this program online.
Sure. Well, I'm super excited to talk about ART, Advanced Rapid Transit. And we call it ART because we are looking forward to being able to use the most innovative types of services in the corridor. So what is Advanced Rapid Transit? Well, you may have heard of Bus Rapid Transit. And so Advanced Rapid Transit is what we will be implementing here in San Antonio on some of these corridors. And you can see, if you can see the livestream and the slide, you can see some of these highlights of what Advanced Rapid Transit is all about. So starting with the stations that we will have very special stations in certain areas along the corridors. Also, there will be off-board fare collection. One of the most exciting things about Advanced Rapid Transit, though, is that it uses primarily dedicated lanes. So dedicated lanes just for the bus service. So what does that do? It creates a much more reliable service. So you know when you're going to get from point A to point B, and you know that that bus is, for the most part, not going to be competing in a lane with other traffic congestion. And so that's very positive for ridership and for our riders. And it's also positive for those who are in their own vehicles, not being behind a bus. So it's really, really exciting. You can pay off-board, so that is also something that makes that service quicker. The first, I don't know if we want to talk right now, but we can talk. The first line that we're looking at is along San Pedro, between Steve's Avenue and the airport, approximately 12 miles. So super exciting and excited to talk about it, happy to answer any questions that there might be about this service.
Great, Kami. And Kami, you mentioned the speed and the reach for Advanced Rapid Transit. This would be something that would be new to this system if I understand Rapid Transit correctly.
Absolutely. It would be new. And you know, one of the most exciting things about it is the frequency. So looking at, you know, between 10, 12, 15-minute frequencies. So what does that do? Well, that means that it's easier to use the service, right? You don't ever have to look at a schedule. You know, if you miss one bus, that another one will be coming along very quickly. Again, it's going to be primarily in its own lane and very, very easy to use. So and also will have its own branding.
So Kami, would you say that it makes it so easy to ride the bus?
It makes it so easy to ride the bus, yes.
What do you think, John Gary? I believe it makes it so easy to ride the bus. And Jeff, that jingle seems to be resonating in your head, my head, and Kami's head. Is there a reason why that jingle is resonating in our head here today?
Oh, there are a lot of reasons why the jingle resonates. The first thing is, as John Gary and I were discussing this earlier today, when we go out in the community, one of the recurring questions that comes is, what's happened with the buppets? Where are the buppets? We want to see the buppets. We want the buppets back. Well, that jingle is associated with the buppets. And when you see the spot, it's so easy to ride the bus. You will at least see the buppets again for the first time in many, many years. And so that's exciting as kind of a cultural icon, as well as the music, which is the old jingle made more contemporary. So all of that is very cool. But let me just talk to you a bit about why it is so easy to ride the bus. And the first thing I'll point to is, as I noted before, that we've worked very hard at increasing frequency across our system. And that was a part of, that was part of the 10 million from the city, and it was also part of putting in additional Primo lines. What we eventually will have is a system that is not primarily, no longer primarily 30-minute and 60-minute frequency, but a system that is primarily 10 minutes to 20-minute frequency. And that's what this plan is all about. What we know is that if you can get to 10-minute frequency, that something like 85% of people are willing to consider riding the bus. When you get to one hour, about 1% of the public is willing to ride the bus. So you can see that the availability of service will afford us a great opportunity to grow ridership. And then I would also go to the fact that it's easy to ride the bus because you know you can be safe riding the bus today. We are continuing all the efforts we made during COVID. We will continue to do thorough cleaning of the buses every night, as we always have done, but also in the field throughout the day, wiping down the high touch points. And the second thing is, we will continue to require masks. Now, that mask requirement is a federal mandate, and it was originally planned to be retired in mid-September. But today, that mandate was extended to the middle of January. So people will have to ride that, wear that mask in order to ride the bus. So you can feel safe when you ride the bus. And then finally, I'd say there are a couple other, I mean, Kami talked about ART, and I talked about the three different, three-letter words. So let me talk to you about each of those and how they make it easier. And let's start with MOD, Mobility on Demand. So in the areas of town where it's difficult to get a big bus in or it's difficult to get from the back of your neighborhood out to the street where a big bus could run, we began a pilot project back in 2019 where we removed bus service that ran once an hour, so not very attractive, and we put in a very Uber-like service that we call ViaLink. And as you saw, just saw on the screen, it's operated in small van-type vehicles. You access it either through an app. And when you access it through the app, it acts, it does act pretty much like Uber or Lyft. You get the trip time, you get the license plate number, you get the name of the driver. It will pick you up very close to where you are. There's many, many, many what we call virtual stops throughout the network and take you within your region or to a point where you connect to the bus system. When you connect to the bus system, it's a transfer. We no longer charge for transfers. So you just pay a bus fare to ride anywhere within that system. So that makes it easier, and it also makes it more convenient because you can make your transit arrive when you need it as to you having to make your schedule work with an hourly bus service. And then the last set of three letters is HOV. And just yesterday, we celebrated, actually, the beginning of operation on an HOV lane on 281 between the Stone Oak Park and Ride and 1604. So the HOV lane is available to people who ride the bus, Route 7, which will operate every 30 minutes between, actually, between Stone Oak and downtown, and then it will continue from there to Brooks. So it's a very long line. You can get clear across town on that one line. Or you can access the HOV lane through car pools. So you don't have to necessarily ride the bus. What we're trying to do in concert with TechDOT is to increase the number of people that a single lane can carry by encouraging use of higher occupancy vehicles, HOVs, to get the travel time benefit and the reliability that the HOV lanes offer. So the combination of frequency on a bus system, MOD in those areas that are better served through demand response, demand response type system like Uber and Lyft, and the affording of HOV for the first time on 281. And by the way, there is another lane on I-10, on the outer reach of I-10, that car pools and van pools can use. Those things all make it easier, more attractive, more desirable to give, take a ride on the bus. It's so easy to ride the bus.
Well, great. Thank you for that. And Jeff and Kami, we got a couple of, we actually got calls coming in, and we got internet questions as well that are coming in. Our first internet question came from John, J-O-N. I love the spelling of your name, same way as I do it. But John was asking about the expansion of mobility on demand, understanding that we have it in the northeast area. Sounds like he's excited about where that can now expand in the future. And Kami, I think you have some great answers for John immediately, not only this year, but for next year.
Sure, absolutely. And thank you for the question, John. So very exciting. We're going to be rolling out some new mobility on demand very soon. So right now, we have mobility on demand. As we brand that, it's ViaLink, and that is in the northeast portion of our service area. It's approximately 17 square miles. So what are we doing next? Well, the next rollout of that service is going to be in Sandy Oaks. There is going to be a ViaLink Express service that will go from Sandy Oaks into the Brooks Transit Center, opening in September. And then quickly following after that, in October, we will have another zone in the northwest, very similar to how the ViaLink operates in the northeast. That's approximately a 14-square-mile zone. And some exciting things about that. It will be connecting not only to UTSA, but also to Northwest Vista College and then also into our system. And just a reminder that in those, in the areas of northeast and northwest, you can go from pretty much any point to any point within the system. And as Jeff already mentioned, it's an Uber-like or Uber Pool or Lyft-like service where you can manage that on your phone, you can see where your ride is, and you can rate and leave comments on the service as well. And then following that, next year, it's just, we're going to have even more services and even more MOD areas opening up. So by this time next year, we could have up to 11 MOD zones, including some zones that are within the, within the areas that, such as the medical center and the Port SA, Brooks, those areas that we're looking at for first and last mile connections. So we're calling those innovation zones. So in addition to serving populations sort of outside the core, outside 410, also areas within, and within the urban core where there can be some very useful service to connect first and last mile to our existing service. So very exciting to talk about that. And the other very cool thing is that this service is, costs the same as a regular bus fare. So $1.30 or $2.75. So it's very, very convenient and efficient. And one other thing I want to mention about the MOD is that it's an accessible service. So not only does it increase our overall footprint in San Antonio, but it does so in a way that the service is also accessible to all.
And Kami, we do not have a, we do not do surge charging. That $1.30 is there reliably, right?
That, absolutely. No surge charging. Very good point.
And if anybody's qualifying for a discount off that $1.30 as well with one of the many programs that we offer, they can ride at that discounted fare as well, such as students that may be going to UTSA where we have a partnership with UTSA for the U-Pass program. Those students can ride that service for free. Incredible, incredible value that we're bringing through the MOD service. Speaking of UTSA, we have a live call that we're going to go to. UTSA professor, Dr. Rosalyn Horowitz, if she is still on the call. We'd love to hear your question.
Well, my question was about transportation to and from UTSA. Although this issue may, of course, affect other colleges in the city. But we're now at 34,000 students. And when I got here 40 years ago, we were at 8,000 students. Parking is always a challenge for students financially and just finding space. So my question is, will there be effort to provide the Advanced Rapid Transit functioning to and from UTSA?
Great question. Kami and Jeff, I know either one of you could take that question. Kami, would you like to talk about that first?
Sure. Well, right now, we, the service that is planned is again on two main corridors, north, north-south, and then that I described earlier, and then east-west. So not necessarily directly to UTSA, but we do believe that this mobility on demand service will provide additional mobility options in that area. And Jeff, I'm sure you can add to that.
So I was going to just share that the HOV that I spoke about earlier, that is on I-10 from the Conley Line pretty much down to 1604, we continue to partner with TechDOT to try and get that HOV lane extended further and further in, at which point you essentially have an ART project that uses the HOV lane to bypass traffic on I-10. So that would be our greatest opportunity to get that kind of high-quality service out to UTSA. TechDOT is working on that right now. The I-10 corridor is one that is a little easier to do, actually, than the 281 corridor inside 1604. So the I-10 corridor is most likely to advance. The other thing I would just note is that the downtown campus, which is really growing as well, is extremely well-served because we have our Central Plaza within just two blocks, I think, of their campus. Central Plaza is the busiest transit point in all of Bear County. We serve over a million passenger trips a year at that location. We have three of the busiest, three of the top 10 busiest stops on that plaza. And Primo serves that plaza. So that's, Primo is a service that is sort of ART-like and gets people down to the plaza and then into downtown. So on the downtown end as well, we're really focused on being able to serve that campus too.
Professor, thank you. Thank you for that question. And fellow UTSA grad here, I will say, very proud of our service that we are not only bringing to UTSA in the MOD version that will be happening later this year, that provide mobility options for the students, but also the 93 Express, aka unofficially the Roadrunner Express, that we have that connecting the two campuses that are connected through and not the route, the existing route that we have serving the two main campuses, the downtown campus and the main campus out on 1604. So we enjoy and relish having the opportunity to serve the students. We will be out there, what we were going to be out there at the beginning of classes. We understand classes are going to be delayed at the campus for the first three weeks, but we will be out there also promoting this MOD service as well as promoting the express service that we have between the two campuses to, again, meet those mobility challenges that the students are discussing with you. So great call, a great question, and we appreciate that. We have another live caller on the line here. Sherry, Sherry, you have a question, I think, about expansion of service. Sherry, are you on the call? If not, maybe Sherry dropped off. But she was actually asking about access to the form. And I believe that would be the form, the shopping form, north of I-10 and 1604. Jeff, you were mentioning the HOV lanes that are out there. Would that be an area that ViaLink could serve? And that was a question that Sherry was asking.
Well, that area, certainly the layout of that area is consistent with the kind of community where ViaLink might serve. You know that that area is also very close to the boundary of our service area. So there would be that consideration as well. And the other thing is that, as I mentioned, HOV lanes on 10 and on 281, the project on 35, which will have elevated, in order to widen, if you will, 35, they can't go sideways like we would think. They're going to widen it by going up. And so there'll be two elevated, two elevated sections, three lanes in each direction up above the lanes that are there today. And that upper deck, two of those lanes, one in each direction, will also be HOV lanes. And so that would also provide us the opportunity to get some kind of express connection out to that area as those lanes get built.
So I'll remind the folks that have joined us that we are taking internet questions, and we're also taking questions from those callers. Those callers can press star three on their keypad to get in queue and in line to talk to one of our staff members, collect your question, and to bring you on live. Those that are watching through the internet can do so through an internet chat capability that we have on the site and ask those internet questions. And I can ask those for you once they are provided. So again, great, great question so far. We do have a live caller, another live caller. Her name is Betty. Betty, I think you have a question about open carry coming up.
Yes, I do. I'm very concerned about this. September 1st is going to be open carry in Texas. And I tried to talk to the governor's office, and I couldn't get anything. And I talked to the mayor's office, and they don't, they're not really anxious about it. But you know, it's coming from the state, you know, from the governor. And I think the problem is, the big cities in Texas are concerned, but there's so many small cities and towns, they don't have any problem with it. And I just wonder, what is VIA going to do about it?
Great question. Jeff, I know that- Jeff, I know that you've been discussing this with our board of trustees as well as among our employees there at.
Right. And with our system, system security and safety folks. We do have a police department. We do have a security department. The security department in fact is going to move in-house next year completely. We contract for a portion of that. You know, the, the rules around, around carrying with a permit and the rules around carrying without a permit are pretty much the same. We have had to deal with guns on buses in effect, or let's just face it, guns at McDonald's, guns in the mall, guns any, it can be anywhere, right? For a number of years, because we have cameras on our buses, it certainly discourages mayhem. I will say that. And so we will have to be again vigilant and make sure that our operators know the protocol and make sure that our customers are safe regardless of what may be out there.
Thank you, Jeff. We have, we have another question that's coming in from John, John Krikmer. I apologize if I butchered your last name there. John, are you on the line? Oh, the internet question? Yep. My apologies. This is an internet question from John. John is asking, how does one pay for MOD in Sandy Oaks? Will they do it online? Will it be through an app? Will it be a cash to the driver? Question that they're, very good question for those that will be starting the service in Sandy Oaks here shortly.
John Gary, do you only accept questions from other people named John?
I think so. That's true.
It seems that way.
Yeah. And, and I'm John, so yeah, I'm attracting them.
There you go. I, I'm going to ask Kami to go ahead and respond to that one.
Yep. So pretty much all of, all of the above are acceptable forms of payment. So any way that you can pay on our buses, you'll be able to pay for any of our mobility on demand services. So cash or on the, or on the app.
I think it's a great time also to talk about the upgrade that we've done with our mobility, mobile app, our mobile app, mobile, mobile plus. And this is also a way to, to utilize the MOD service, not only in Sandy Oaks, but any of the MOD services that we have. You can buy your fare on the ViaGo mobile app. And through that Go mobile app, you present that to the driver and the driver would recognize that as your payment for that. That's one of the easiest ways to do that. Obviously we'll take cash, obviously we'll take the GoCard. GoCard is also another established form of payment that we have established for our riders here in San Antonio, and we'll, we'll, we'll take those forms on mobility on demand. We're going to go to.
We'll also take poll. Oh, John Gary. John Gary, we, we will also take those forms on the bus system, not just on mobility on demand.
Right. Great, great distinction, Jeff. Absolutely. Don't, don't want to take the bus system for granted here. It is indeed of the, you know, it is indeed the same way that we would do it on the bus. And, and it's the same price. We want to keep emphasizing that on this call because there seems to be greatly a lot of interest in mobility on demand. We love that and we're going to keep emphasizing it's the same price for the bus for mobility on demand and utilization of that. We're going to go to internet poll question. Now this internet poll question is a great way for folks to interact and for us to gather a little bit of information from those folks that are on the line tonight. We want to hear from you and we're going to ask you a quick poll question. If you are on the phone, you can vote by pressing a corresponding number on your keypad. If you're online, you can vote by selecting your response below the streaming question. Our first poll question tonight is how frequently do you ride VIA? Press one for every day. Press two for a few times a month. Press three if you used to ride VIA but don't anymore, or press four if you don't ride VIA at all. I'm going to repeat those again. Press one if you ride VIA every day. Press two if you ride VIA a few times a month. Press three if you used to ride VIA but don't anymore. And press four if you don't ride VIA at all. So we'll come back and, and get the responses to those questions here shortly. But we'll take, we'll actually go into reminding folks that you again can press star three on your keypad at any time to get in the queue to ask us a question. And again, online by submitting your question. One of the questions. Oh, yes, Jeff.
I was, I was going to remark that, you know, one of the things a pandemic really showed us, and when we were, when we were providing essential service, is how important even if you don't personally ride the bus, if you go to a restaurant and your server very well may ride the bus, if you go to the doctor's office, people at the doctor's office at the hospital could be riding the bus. And then the part that we almost forgot about, but is very much present there, I received an email from a gentleman, "Thank you for maintaining VIA service. I had no other way to get groceries." So there are people that rely on, on really essential life functions. So we're very proud of the fact that we are serving the community, perhaps not everyone directly, but I believe the entire community either directly or indirectly.
And Jeff, that was a very much a corresponding salute when we received the support from the voters in the city of San Antonio, where 67% of the voters voted for us to proceed forward with the sales tax funding for the Keep San Antonio Moving Plan. We recognize that the vast majority of those voters do not take our service. They see the value that VIA is providing the community and they recognize that it's a vital part of the economy and a vital part of the economy, not only for folks to get to where they needed to go to buy services and goods, but also to go to work. Majority of, of folks that ride our service on a consistent basis do so for a matter of work, a matter of getting to a job. And that's an important distinction that we've made, and I think it was one that resonated during the election.
And I think this is a perfect chance. Oh, we'll do that. Let's do the live caller.
Okay. Live caller, we got Ziv. I'm hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. You got a question about moving to electric vehicles for VIA?
Yes. All right. Well.
Did I just ask your whole question there, Ziv? I'm, I'm sorry, I, I stole your thunder there, but is that, that was electric vehicles for VIA and what is our plan to move towards electric vehicles?
Yes.
All right. Excellent. So we have ordered eight electric vehicles. First of all, we have three electric vehicles from 2011. You can imagine the technology is not nearly what the technology is today, but we actually got those vehicles with federal funding and they were used to help the bus manufacturers better understand how they operated in a live environment. So in that way, we were part of kind of helping the technology move forward. We just ordered eight electric buses that should be here next year. Those buses will be placed on specific routes where their range, we'll be able to maintain their range. Today, if, if you look at the electric bus fleet today, there, there is a range issue. Range being how many miles you can put on the vehicle before you have to recharge it. And, and so today, the battery technology is not quite there in a 40-foot bus to allow you to have it out like you would a CNG bus, which is what we primarily operate. I believe that technology however, will continue to grow and we will reach a point in which the electric bus will become common, the same way that I believe in the automotive industry, the electric car is going to become very common. And so as we develop our, our next maintenance facility, we are going to incorporate into that the ability to charge an electric fleet with a, with a, at least idea that when we replace our existing bus fleet, it is likely that we will be moving to electric buses by the end of this decade.
Jeff, there, in industry wide, what, what has been the adoption rate for electric vehicles for transit agencies across the United States in general?
So it's one of those things, if you look on a percent basis, the growth has been significant because it was a small piece, right? It's still a relatively small piece. And actually the, the industry has slowed a bit in the adoption of electric vehicles based upon issues that they've had with the range, for example, where the vehicle could not be kept out and you had to haul it back or find a way to get it back. And some issues with respect to the frames, because those batteries are heavy. And so a lot of the electric buses in the American US fleet have started seeing frame issues. Again, another problem that is not insurmountable, another problem that I believe can easily be solved by the end of the decade. And that's why we will be preparing to introduce a much broader than eight bus fleet when we move forward with our next operating facility.
So we have the results of our first poll question and I'm going to read those results out here for us. Very interesting. We have 14% of the respondents indicated that they ride every day. 26% of the respondents are saying that they ride a few times a month. 33%, the largest group of the four, said they used to ride us but don't anymore. And then 27% of those respondents said they don't ride at all. Interesting that it's the 33% is the largest group, Jeff, because we are also talking about ridership recovery and focusing on that ridership recovery for VIA this year. And that is indeed what we believe with the, as we, as we drop the 45, to 45% on our ridership, we are looking to gain back that ridership. But maybe 33% is representing some of those that are waiting for a little more definitive definition of what's going on with this pandemic. But it is indeed something that we're looking at and it's something that we're focused on. Jeff, would you like to talk a little bit more about that?
What I would really like to talk about is the fact that, that there are people that used to ride the bus that don't anymore. And that's in some respects are part of the success story of the bus fleet. And I'll just recount, I'll recount a story. A young man approached me at an event. He said, "I'm so thankful for VIA. I've been on VIA since I was a baby. My mother took the bus to work every day. She took me to daycare center every day. I took the bus to school every day." Now eventually, when I was in school, my mother decided she would return to school. And first she earned her bachelor's, then her master's, and then her doctorate. And she made it to school and back on the bus. Now he ended his story saying, "But I have to tell you, my mom bought a car." And I said, "Well, that happens in the best of families, not to worry." But the fact is that all of those opportunities would not have necessary, would not have been within reach of the mother and the son and the family and all that goes with that had VIA not been there to provide those connections.
Absolutely. Great point. We have, we have, we have a couple of folks that are asking the same question here. And this question has to do with VIA Trans. VIA Trans, will it continue is one of the questions? And if so, will it continue service to South Bear County? Jeff, I'll, I'll pitch that one over to you. Important, important product and, and service that we deliver to our constituents.
So VIA Trans will definitely continue. If, I will tell you that it is a federal mandate that we provide demand response alternative within a quarter to a half mile of all the bus service we operate. So if a bus goes into a community, then VIA Trans will go into the community. It will continue to go in the community. As Kami talked earlier, in the mobility on demand areas, the two that we are opening northeast and northwest, those folks that are currently enrolled in, in VIA Trans will be grandfathered in. But quite frankly, that system is designed to be fully accessible. And so it's not even that you have to get a special reservation or a special, special trip. However, we will maintain VIA Trans service to people who currently use it. They have a pattern, they're used to it, and, and we will do that as a courtesy. But clearly, as you know, the, the Keep SA Moving Plan actually increases the amount of the area we cover by 30% by the end of, of the decade. And therefore you're going to have 30% more area or people who live in that area, I should say, people who live in that 30% larger area, who are going to have access to accessible service.
You know, Jeff, I'll, I'll also add to that, that, you know, VIA Trans is a, is a very important topic for not only this town hall that we've seen over the, over the course of the last year and a half that we've been doing this, but we have also now dedicated a whole town hall episodes to just focusing on VIA Trans and the questions and, and ideas and, and, and information that we can provide the public about VIA Trans. We actually have our next telephone town hall scheduled for September 22nd at 6:00 PM where the, the topic will be nothing but VIA Trans. So we appreciate the interest in that's very important service that we offer the community and we look forward to talking about it more on September 22nd at 6:00 PM. We are going to move to an internet question from Terry. Terry is asking, "How would ART service differ from Primo?" Kami, I think that one's right up your alley.
Sure. Well, the biggest difference is in the dedicated lanes for the transit. So Primo operates in mixed transit, one, uh, mixed traffic, I'm sorry. One of the things that I didn't mention was the, the signal priority that our buses get, and, and they do so on most of our Primo, but they will have that also on the ART lines. But I think the biggest difference really to call out is the dedicated, the dedicated lanes for our buses. And again, I think it's really important to emphasize that, that that makes the service much more reliable. Do you know that your travel time is going to be a certain, you know, a certain amount of time because you're not competing with any traffic congestions about any, with anything else that might be going on in, in the roadway? So that's the biggest difference that I, that I would, that I would say. So, um, yeah.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Kami, Kami, maybe you'd. Kami, maybe you'd like to talk about offboard fare collection and how that makes it easier as well.
Yeah, it, yeah, I was going, so that, that's also another aspect of the, the advanced rapid transit that I mentioned previously is that offboard fare collection. So that also speeds, speeds the service because the, the fares are collected again before, before folks get on the bus. And yep, so that's another very positive aspect and difference from Primo. Thanks, Jeff.
Would, would it be fair Kami, that we could describe ART as Primo on steroids because of its speed and reach far beyond anything that Primo can deliver?
Sure. Absolutely. Yes. And.
Legal steroids, of course, I reference.
Oh, absolutely. Super Primo, that's what we'll call it. Super Primo.
But, but it absolutely Kami, you're, you're focusing on the speed and the reach and, and that is going to be part of our poll question number two, because we know that some important factors when choosing VIA service. And what is, so we're going to go into our poll question number two. And again, those folks that are on the phone, we're going to ask you to press a, press a certain number on your phone relative to what is the most important factor when choosing to use VIA? And for those that don't ride VIA, what would be the most important factor for you in order to choose VIA? So that would be press one if service frequency is the most important factor. So how often does the bus come by? That would be service frequency. Press two for service destinations, where it can take me. Press three for trip time. How long will it take me to get there? And press four, the cost and the fare. I'm going to repeat those again. Press one if service frequency is the most important factor when choosing our service. How often it is, does it come? Press two if service destinations, that it's going where it needs to take you. If that's the most important factor. Press three if trip time, how much time you spend traveling? How long will it take you to get there? If that's the most important factor for choosing VIA services. Or press number four for the cost or the fare. And we'll come back to, to that. But meanwhile, we have another live caller, Gregory. Gregory, I am not going to steal your thunder in this case. I am going to ask if you're on the line and you can ask your question.
Yes, I am on the line. And one of the questions that I had to ask is will this advanced rapid travel and the mobility on demand, will that be? and the mobility on demand, will that be ubiquitous throughout the service? Or that's only in selected areas?
Sure. I can, I can jump in and take that. I think the first question was where, where advanced rapid transit will, will travel? And so we currently have two, two lines that we're advancing. The first one is the north, south. Primarily that is along San Pedro. It's from Steve's Avenue to the airport with a couplet on St. Mary's and Navarro in downtown. And then east-west line, a little over seven miles from General McMullen to AT&amp;T Center. So that's, those are the first two lines that we're looking at for a number of factors. And a lot of that also had to do with, with planning that has, has happened over the past many years. And a lot of public input on, on where, where individuals wanted to see that advanced rapid transit go in, go in first. And then with the mobility on demand, so primarily the mobility on demand, or again, Via Link as, as, as our brand. That is primarily in, in areas, you know, outside of 410, generally in areas where the bus service doesn't work as well. And why is that? Well, there's, there's a few, few factors there. One can be just the street layout. And then, and the other is, is really, really the density. So we, we look at areas where the service would generally provide a better service than typical, than our typical bus, line, bus service. Now, I also mentioned, though, that along with those areas, we're looking at some type of mobility on demand service in several other urban areas, like the medical center, downtown, Port SA and Brooks. So it's not, it's not going to be all over the city. It will be in specific areas. And those areas are the areas that we're looking at first, where, where it'll work, work best. It'll work better. It'll be a more efficient way to travel. And hopefully that answered the.
Oh, thank you, Kami. That was great. Great response. Thank you. We, we have a response, speaking of which, from that poll question that we just asked. I'm going to go through that. So we'll start from cost. Cost being, asking the question, reminding the folks, the question was, what are the most important factors to decide that you have related to taking and considering taking our service? Cost, 10% of the respondents said that cost was their most important distinguisher. 27% of the respondents said service frequency. That should sound like music to Jeff's ears. Trip time, 29% of the respondents said that that's one of their most important factors. And then coming in at number one are those that were participating in the, in the poll question, indicating that service destinations, 34% of those indeed was indicating that they want to make sure that the bus is going to where it, it needs to go. I would say, Jeff, you know, and pitch it over to you, I'd love to hear your comments on that distribution. But frequency probably influences many of those factors altogether. But I, I know you, you definitely are an evangelist of frequency and we'd love to hear that discussion.
Of course, I, I say the three rules of successful transit is frequency and then frequency and then frequency. Because that's what makes a service attractive. In this poll, I certainly understand why destinations would be high because if you're not using the service today and the bus route does not go to where you need to go, then it's already, you know, it's already off the table. So when we talk about frequency, 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 we're talking about routes that are established that have the destinations. And and so that's why, you know, it scores relatively high. Trip time is important, and that's one of the reasons that we look at investing in HOV, investing in MOD, investing in ART. We have all these letters, don't we? And investing in Primo for that matter. So all of those, the, all of those things are about trying to have a more attractive trip time. It's difficult to compete with a single person automobile because you get in and you don't have to stop and pick up anybody else on the way. You just keep right on going. So it's difficult for transit to, to fully compete with driving a car, except perhaps in the commuter service that uses an HOV or in a ART line where you have the dedicated lane and you bypass the congestion. And at that point, yes, you, you can have a travel time savings as well.
You know, Jeff, I'll add to that piece about the cost. You know, it, it's also, this is probably where we shine a great deal for this community as in keeping the affordability of the service for the mobility. While maybe we don't compete head to head with the abilities that the car has and the vehicle has. But on a monthly basis, we have a monthly pass at $38. And I don't believe you can own and run a vehicle in San Antonio for $38. So this is where the value and the costs associated with what we provide really comes in and becomes a very important distinguisher for us. And we appreciate those callers that in particular identified as cost is a great reason of why they choose transit. So we put that into perspective there, hopefully for, for those folks that are listening. So we are, we are now heading towards the end here. We have a caller who would like to say a few words to us. And that caller, if the caller is still on the line, Elodia Banks? Elodia, if I'm spelling or pronouncing your name correctly?
Yes.
Yep, I think we hear you, Elodia.
Yes. Well, I'd like to say, I really do appreciate all the hard work that you do for the community and the environment. Right now, they go start with the new buses, the electronic. That's a great thing, a great advance if San Antonio is moving forward.
Jeff, that.
What can I say but thank you very much? Yes, we, we are moving forward. We're trying to, as I say, especially because of this additional funding received, we are going to keep San Antonio moving, moving. Going to keep that plan moving. And so we.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
I did want to mention that our CNG fleet, and if you've been reading about air quality and NOx, which is the major air quality issue that our region faces, that our CNG buses emit 97% less NOx than the diesel buses they replaced. So that's our first step toward an improved environment with the bus system. And then, of course, we'll look for zero emission buses into the future.
I just wanted to say thank you. Oh, I just wanted to say thank you for, for that wonderful, positive feedback. And it's, it's that kind of positive feedback that keeps us moving too and really appreciate that.
And it brings us around to our closing remarks that, you know, I'll, I'll kick off and Kami will go to you. And we'll have Jeff wrap it up for us on, on this, another great addition and successful telephone town hall where we are interacting with the community, with our customers. And having this forum and this ability to communicate and, and talk to the community is so important to us. We really appreciate those that called in today because your feedback is critical. Your feedback is something that we build upon. And, and it also provides us, as the caller just did for us now, provides us that extra spark of energy, knowing that we do, what we're doing is truly appreciated in the community. And we can't thank you enough for that. Kami, I'll pitch it over to you for some closing remarks. And then we'll have Jeff put a bow on it, as we say.
Thank you so much for participating in, in this tele-town hall. We're just very, very excited about the new innovative services that are, that are equitable, that will really, really bring just added mobility to, to San Antonio. So I just want to say thank you and please continue to participate, provide your feedback as we move forward, keep, keeping San Antonio moving.
So what I would like to say, first of all, I, I want to make sure, because we, in all this talk about ART, HOV, MOD, EIEIO, all the initials, we sometimes lose sight of people. And that's what we're here for. So I want to talk about two people, two groups of people. First of all, what I consider the Via, Via heroes. And that's the men and the women who got those, have gotten the buses out on the road every day through the pandemic. Operators, mechanics, all our frontline staff, our security people, our customer service people. They are all Via heroes. They are the ones that, that really serve this community directly. So proud of that group of people. The second group of people are our customers. And we are not a bus company. Don't, don't believe that Via is the bus company. We are the mobility company. You've heard plenty today about things other than buses, right? But the whole point is mobility is the key to opportunity. Opportunity can be out there, but if you don't have mobility, it won't, it won't do any good for you because you just can't get there. We have numerous stories of people whose lives have been changed, including the, the example I gave earlier, because they were able to get access to a job, to training, to education, or to dialysis, you know, critical medical treatment through Via. And so that's what Kami was talking about, what keeps us going. What keeps us going too is knowing that we are providing an essential and important service to our customers.
Great way to wrap it up, Jeff. And we want to thank everyone for their participation tonight. And we will close this out and wish everybody a great night and stay safe.